Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
We will now move on to public hearings. Orders number 4316. Authorize the execution of a lease agreement between the City of Elizabeth and 207 Broad L.L., State Care of Palma. Property management reduced by the municipal court annex at 20 Commerce Place for a term of fifteen years, including August 21st, 2027, with an opt-out option after seven years at a rate of $131,400 per annum for the first seven years and $154,000 per annum for the remaining years excluding charge of $500 per month for maintenance and cleaning of the common area.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4316. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4316? You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4316. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4316? Seeing none, I call for public hearing of Orders Number 4316.
Orders Number 4317. Adopted ordinance vacating the portion of New Point Road between Sixth Street and Broadway and Residenz. Orders Number 4265 adopted November 22nd, 2011, due to an error in the needs and bounds description which did not encompass the entire area to be vacated.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4317. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4317? You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4317. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4317? Seeing none, I call for public hearing of Orders Number 4317.
Orders Number 4318. Authorize the ordinance to exceed the fiscal year 2013 municipal budget cost of living allowance and to establish a cap bank when the cost of living allowance is equal to or less than 200% for zone two and JSA 4804-45.14.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4318. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4318? You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4318. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4318? Seeing none, I call for public hearing of Orders Number 4318.
Orders Number 4319. Authorize bond ordinance in the amount of $2 million providing for improvements to the waterfront park.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4319. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4319? You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4319. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4319? Seeing none, I call for public hearing of Orders Number 4319.
Orders Number 4320. Authorize bond ordinance in the amount of $5 million providing for improvements to the South Street sewer system.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4320. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4320? You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4320. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4320? Seeing none, I call for public hearing of Orders Number 4320.
Orders Number 4321. Authorize proper city officials to enter into a long-term tax abating agreement with vessel condo Joel Elizabeth Urban Renewal L.L. of State Care of Palma, New Jersey for construction and redevelopment of 66877 North Avenue East in compliance with the local redevelopment and housing laws and the long-term tax exemption law.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4321. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4321? You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4321. Is there anyone present who would like to address Orders Number 4321? Seeing none, I call for public hearing of Orders Number 4321. The Elizabeth Avenue Special Improvement District fiscal year 2013 budget in the amount of $360,282. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on this? Orders. Once again, is there anyone who would like to speak on this budget? Seeing none, I call for public hearing on this budget. With the consent of my colleagues, I will commence with the reading of petitions and communications and reports of city officers and move on to ordinances on the first reading.
Orders Number 4322. Authorize amendment to Chapter 8.8 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Regulation of Vacant and Foreclosed Residencies Properties, specifically to include proof of utility connections, disconnections, and to increase annual registration fees.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4322. What is your pleasure? Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on first reading. Orders Number 4323. Authorize super utility bond orders in the amount not to exceed $20 million to finance various sewer caped projects to upgrade the city's aging super utility infrastructure.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4323. What is your pleasure? Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on first reading. Public hearing of further consideration of the foregoing ordinances shall take place at the City Council meeting to be held Tuesday, August 28th, 2012, at 7:30 PM. We will now move on to ordinances on final passage.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
I know this is a long one, but may I speak? It'll be very quick. Can we wait till we get the resolutions, Counselor?
Thank you.
Orders Number 4316. Authorize the execution of a lease agreement between the City of Elizabeth and 207 Broad L.L., State Care of Palma. Property management reduced by the municipal court annex at 20 Commerce Place for a term of fifteen years, including August 21st, 2027, with an opt-out option after seven years at a rate of $131,400 per annum for the first seven years and $154,000 per annum for the remaining years excluding charge of $500 per month for maintenance and cleaning of the common area.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4316. What is your pleasure? Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Orders Number 4317. Adopted ordinance vacating the portion of New Point Road between Sixth Street and Broadway and Residenz. Number 4265 adopted November 22nd, 2011, due to an error in the needs and bounds description which did not encompass the entire area to be vacated.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4317. What is your pleasure? Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Orders Number 4318. Authorize ordinance to exceed the fiscal year 2013 municipal budget cost of living allowance and to establish a cap bank when the cost of living allowance is equal to or less than 200% for zone two and JSA 4804-45.14.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4318. What is your pleasure? Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Orders Number 4319. Authorize bond ordinance in the amount of $2 million providing for improvements to the waterfront park.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4319. What is your pleasure? Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Orders Number 4320. Authorize bond ordinance in the amount of $5 million providing for improvements to the South Street sewer system.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4320. What is your pleasure? Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Orders Number 4321. Authorize proper city officials to enter into a long-term tax abating agreement with vessel condo Joel Elizabeth Urban Renewal L.L. of State Care of Palma, New Jersey for the construction and redevelopment of 66877 North Avenue East in compliance with the local redevelopment and housing laws and the long-term tax exemption law.
You've heard the reading of Orders Number 4321. What is your pleasure? Move this second. Are there any comments? Councilman Mazza.
President, some councilmen request some bond numbers and names of people in order to send documents of local people from Elizabeth, New Jersey, that is opening for jobs that will be created from this particular project. Do you see that information? Because I'm not a county attorney.
My understanding is that there is something under question. Just there. Just there, Counselor. Did you see it, Counselor?
Okay. He says that he promised to register, but the person who'd be in touch would be confidential. That's a sub... Is that a subcontract?
Generally tomorrow on August 28th.
Right, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure, Counselor. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor woman, the president.
Yes, on the same page as some councilmen have spoken. We asked for some type of process for program in terms of how they're going to be hiring Elizabeth residents. This is far way short of what we really asked for. I mean, how will the people know that the jobs are available for contractors? So they're gonna provide a notice to residents? What, you know? It's really far short of what we really need when asking.
In fact, according to the city folks, again, 45% of the current employees of Elizabeth, they will be given breakfast. But I don't know if there's something we can do to ensure that they'll get notified when they can see that they become available. Just certainly make that effort to get to more clarification on that point.
Okay, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
Orders passed on final.
We will now move on to a suspension. Yes, I have suspension. Need a motion, Mrs. Santos. So, so look. Move this second. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Letter dated July 9, 2012 from the Morrison Campaigners Association requesting to amend the resolution date to August 23rd, 2011, granting permission to conduct their ninth annual Colombian Independence Day festival on Sunday, July 29, 2012, with ranking 45 through August 12. Specifically, change the date from July 29 to the approved ranking of August 5, 2012.
Basically, we have here is they are requesting to change the date of the festival from 29 to the 5. That's the only thing that a council will be considering at this point. We don't see any obstacles to doing that if somebody has been concerned.
Is there a motion, Mr. President? Any motion to move it?
I move the resolution.
Yes, move. We just...
I'll say that.
Vocal. So, we have nothing to speak on here. Excuse me, we do have nothing to speak on the resolution here. I just wanted to... We all have a letter from Pastor George Chacon from the Catholic Conception Church. Should be on the desk. He was complaining that the police department was not allowing these Christians to get to his church on Sunday, which was the last Colombian festival we just had. So, we can get a letter out to the police director so that on August 5, the services at the Catholic Conception do not get affected again.
Do we have that letter here, Counselor?
It's impacted.
It's impacted, okay. Okay, thanks for bringing that up, Counselor.
That sounds to match.
Sure. Absolutely. Are there any other comments?
Mr. President.
Yes, come to the desk.
And with regard to the letter that Councilwoman Grover spoke about, I think the letter was a little bit deeper. I think there are some things here that we need to be very concerned about. One of them is, he used alcohol. He notes here in his letter, he says, alcohol use that I witness, that pastor witnesses, not only upon adults, but underage people as well. There needs to be a presence there with regards to alcohol consumption so that church and surrounding businesses that are open are not affected by this festival. I think that's very important. I also brought up the fact that we should be considering the use of the waterfront park since we're spending, what, $2 million to burn it to send all the festivals away as set up to be down at the waterfront park. I know Mel Mel does use the waterfront park at Good Days in September, though. So, we should start to consider the waterfront park again in all festivals. And I know Councilman Mountain is on his behalf, and he actually passed that resolution. So, I don't know what we can do right now with regards to the underage drinking and the adult drinking as a control. So, I'm sure it's more intoxicating for this region to see. Are we going to ask the ABC people? They're gonna be out there investigating, especially ABC detectives. They have some very... Would you know what, Mr. President?
I know I don't, but I will make sure that I inform them.
I think that's the major concern is, parking is one thing and the collections during the mass are another concern of this because that's how that church must stay open. And as you know, Mr. President, in the past, there have been many churches in Elizabeth that have been closed due to lack of students, lack of income, and stating right here in the effect of this church. I'm sure he's probably teetering right now on that right now. So, he needs every little bit that he can, and I think we need to help him.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. I'll... In fact, I said it quick if you were forward, and I'll give that letter to the ABC detective, please. Any other comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Authorization amendment to fiscal year 2013 caped budget in the amount of $10 million. Adopted fiscal year 2013 in town Elizabeth Special Improvement District budget in the amount of $360,282. Authorize temporary emergency appropriations for the 2013 fiscal year municipal super utility budgets in the amount of $60,000. Authorize fiscal year 2012 municipal super utility budget transfers in the amount of $228,000. Request permission from the Director of Local Government Services to accept a dedication by rider to the fiscal year 2012 budget for donations, acceptance, self-dequests, and gifts from the York Community Bank and Drake College to support men's empowerment laws as required by NJS4805-29. Confirm the following reappointments and appointments to the Board of Adjustment. Commissioner Antonio Nacalvez to serve as a full-term member to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Jackson Altador. Commissioner Reverend Larry Lee Dixon to serve as alternate member number one to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Antonio Nacalvez. Commissioner Elizabeth Cano to serve as alternate member number two to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Reverend Larry Lee Dixon. Commissioner Orlando P. Gollis to serve as alternate member number three to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Elizabeth Cano. Mr. Charles Robert Bablis to serve as an alternate member number four to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Orlando P. Gollis. Confirm the reappointment of the following to serve as municipal public defenders within municipal court for the period July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013, at a rate of $300 per session for a total amount not to exceed $140,000. Candido Rodriguez Jr., Esquire, as chief municipal defender, at an additional compensation of $5,000. Tony Hernandez Rodriguez, Esquire Elizabeth. Chaney McKay Odoms, Esquire Scotch Honeys. Deirdre and Mason, Esquire Scotch Honeys. Celeste Wilson, Esquire Union. Nuno Alfonso, Esquire. Wilo L. Alfonso, Esquire Elizabeth. Lindell Scott Foster, Esquire Elizabeth. Maria Andiz, Esquire Elizabeth. And Stephen E. Gerbler, Esquire Walders.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution for both of them.
Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Authorization amendment to fiscal year 2013 caped budget in the amount of $10 million. Adopted fiscal year 2013 in town Elizabeth Special Improvement District budget in the amount of $360,282. Authorize temporary emergency appropriations for the 2013 fiscal year municipal super utility budgets in the amount of $60,000. Authorize fiscal year 2012 municipal super utility budget transfers in the amount of Request permission from the Director of Local Government Services to accept a dedication by rider to the fiscal year 2012 budget for donations, acceptance, self-dequests, and gifts from the York Community Bank and Drake College to support men's empowerment laws as required by NJS4805-29. Confirm the following reappointments and appointments to the Board of Adjustment. Commissioner Antonio Nacalvez to serve as a full-term member to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Jackson Altador. Commissioner Reverend Larry Lee Dixon to serve as alternate member number one to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Antonio Nacalvez. Commissioner Elizabeth Cano to serve as alternate member number two to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Reverend Larry Lee Dixon. Commissioner Orlando P. Gollis to serve as alternate member number three to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Elizabeth Cano. Mr. Charles Robert Bablis to serve as an alternate member number four to build the unexpired term of Commissioner Orlando P. Gollis. Confirm the reappointment of the following to serve as municipal public defenders within municipal court for the period July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013, at a rate of $300 per session for a total amount not to exceed $140,000. Candido Rodriguez Jr., Esquire, as chief municipal defender, at an additional compensation of $5,000. Tony Hernandez Rodriguez, Esquire Elizabeth. Chaney McKay Odoms, Esquire Scotch Honeys. Deirdre and Mason, Esquire Scotch Honeys. Celeste Wilson, Esquire Union. Nuno Alfonso, Esquire. Wilo L. Alfonso, Esquire Elizabeth. Lindell Scott Foster, Esquire Elizabeth. Maria Andiz, Esquire Elizabeth. And Stephen E. Gerbler, Esquire Walders.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution for both of them.
Move this second. Are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Orders passed on final. Authorization amendment to fiscal year 2013 caped budget in the amount of $10 million. Adopted fiscal year 2013 in town Elizabeth Special Improvement District budget in the amount of $360,282. Authorize the order of contract to American Homes and Hydraulics Company, Patterson, Jersey, for the purchase of Nissan's automotive and hydraulic truck parts and repairs for road maintenance equipment for baggage departments for the period June 30, 2012 through June purchase of parts and repairs for road maintenance equipment for the period June 30, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $200,000. Authorizing award of contract to King University Union for computer consulting services for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $50,500. Authorizing award of contract to Dr. Michael Arzabaski, Elizabeth, to serve as the physician for the Elizabeth Police Department for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at a fee not to exceed $20,000. Authorizing award of contract to Meadowbrook Inc., Star Insurance Company, Princeton, New Jersey, through the agent of record, Sorocco Group, for a policy of insurance covering excess insurance on workers' compensation for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at an annual premium of $189,000. Authorize the property officials to execute an indemnification agreement with the Elizabeth Board of Education covering the city's utilization of board of education facilities during the 2012-2013 fiscal year.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your question?
All resolutions approved.
Move this second. Are there any comments? Sign them vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dastky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brode?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gollum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nasa?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Authorizing award of contract to Atlantic Tactical Equipment, Jersey, East Somerset, New Jersey, for the purchase of ammunition protected vests and other crime prevention equipment and supplies for the police department and ambulance service bureau for the period May 1, 2012 to April 30, 2014 at a cost not to exceed $200,000. Authorizing award of contract to roadside bond corporation, Bay Area, New Jersey, for the purchase of six Meyer stainless steel tailgate spreaders under the Somerset County Cooperative Purchasing Contract with the Department of Public Works with a total amount of $13,482. Authorizing amendment to a resolution adopted October 25, 2011 award of contract to Northeast Photomotor Truck Parts LLC for the purchase of photoparts and accessories at a cost not to exceed $100,000 specifically to increase the contract amount an additional $50,000. Authorizing award of contract to Royal Printing Service, West New York, for the printing of sample ballots, voting machine ballots, emergency ballots, and tally sheets for the 2012 primary and general elections in the amount of $40,515. Authorizing award of contract to Archonic Systems LLC, Martin, New Jersey, for maintenance and annual license fees for software for police, computer assistant records management and dispatch system software and ex-mobile lines for one-year period at a cost of $79,430. Authorizing award of contract with the law firm of Genova Burns and Johnson, S.S., to provide the city with employment council with the city's recognized partner in the midst for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $95,000.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your question?
All resolutions approved.
Move this second. Are there any comments? Sign them vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dastky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brode?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Svenja?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gollum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nasa?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Authorizing award of contract with the law firm of Court Bundy, Barry, and Cella, Esquire Union, New Jersey, to provide the city with legal services in defense of civil litigation and auto general liability cases and matters included within the city's self-insurance program for the period July 1, 2012 through June 20, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $450,000 except as specifically authorized by City Council. Authorizing award of contract with the law firm of Court Bundy, Barry, and Cella, Esquire Union, New Jersey, to provide the city with legal services in defense of workers' compensation cases and matters included within the city's partial self-insurance program for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $150,000 except as specifically authorized by City Council. Authorizing award of respective contracts to Cologie and Simmons, Esquire Linden, Robert F. Fernola, Esquire Cranford, Peter H. Spade, Esquire Manaslon, Guy Ryan, Esquire Thomas River, Craig and Dowd, Esquire Wood Park, Alan Z. Roth, Esquire Surinfield, Ashenon Wilson, Esquire Wesley, Raymond Flonda, Esquire Elizabeth, and Florina McKenney, Esquire Hoboken, to serve as legal counsel for representation of city and city employees in court litigation with the law firm of Court Bundy, Barry, and Cella, Esquire Archonic Group of Interest for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $65,000 per attorney. Authorizing award of contract to Ashenon Wilson, Esquire Wesley, New Jersey, to provide the city with legal counsel for the Midtown redevelopment project for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $90,000 unless further authorized by City Council.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your question?
All resolutions approved.
Move this second. Any comments? Sign them vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dastky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brode?
Abstaining.
All votes. Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gollum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nasa?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Authorizing property officials to enter into a contract with the law firm of Brown and Allen, Esquire Springfield, New Jersey, to provide the city with legal services in conjunction with tax appeal cases for fiscal year 2013 in the amount not to exceed $130,000. Authorizing property officials to enter into a contract with Stack Hole, stack LLC, Hoboken, New Jersey, to provide the city with expert real estate and personal services in connection with state tax court appeals for the fiscal year 2013 in the amount not to exceed $78,000. Authorizing property officials to enter into a contract with Lewis M. Meg, CPA and Associates, Kenelon, New Jersey, to conduct statutory audits of the general funds, super utility, other funds, and simple audit of federal and state grants for fiscal year 2013 and five-year comparative statements in an amount not to exceed $212,000. Authorizing award of contract to the law firm of DePauw, Smith, Fitzpatrick &amp; Co., L.L.P., T-NET, New Jersey, to provide the city with bond counsel services in connection with the city's issuance of debt obligations for the fiscal year 2013 at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Authorizing property officials to enter into a contract with the K.C. Financial Group. Martin, New Jersey, to provide financial advisory services in connection with the city's issuance of municipal super utility debt obligations, including bonds and bond anticipation notes, and any other financial analysis deemed necessary for the fiscal year 2013 in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your question?
All resolutions approved.
Move this second. Are there any comments? Sign them vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins Dastky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brode?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gollum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nasa?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Authorizing property officials to enter into a contract with Powell Capital Markets, E. Roseland, New Jersey, to provide financial advisory services in connection with the city's issuance of municipal super utility debt obligations, including bonds and bond anticipation notes, and any other financial analysis deemed necessary for the fiscal year 2013 in an amount not to exceed $40,000. Authorizing property officials to execute all appropriate documents for grant funds for the continuation of the housing opportunities for people with AIDS program for the period January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2013. Authorizing property officials to return 620, 624 First Avenue to the tax roll due to default on the financial agreement between 621 Urban Renewal LP, Care of Luis Rodriguez and the City of Elizabeth under the prevailing tax abatement statute. Authorizing property officials to return 600 Fulton Street to the tax roll due to default of the financial agreement between Millennium Urban Renewal LP, Care of Luis Rodriguez and the City of Elizabeth under the prevailing tax abatement statute. Authorizing property officials to execute all appropriate documents pertaining to the 2012 Sustainable Jersey Small Brands Program funded by Public Service Electric and Gas to promote sustainability initiatives within the community and capture the quality of life for its residents. Authorizing amendment to a resolution adopted March 13, 2012 for third-party agreement with the Hills for State Holdings LLC for the rehabilitation of properties located at 325 Fulton Street and 200 Livingston Street in the amount of $340,000 specifically to increase the amount of funds and additional $260,000 to also rehabilitate a three-family home located at 805 East Jersey Street consistent with the rules and regulations of a third-party agreement as required under the terms of the New Jersey State Neighborhood Stable Development Program.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. What is your question?
Mr. President?
Move this second. Are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Councilman, at the public speaking session, we received a package from Mr. Luis Rodriguez pertaining 620, 624 First Avenue, 600 Fulton Street. I had some glad shots figures and evidence or whatever. At the beginning of the meeting, I was talking to Mr. Rodriguez that he was very disappointed by this attorney if I, the attorney, was supposed to do the proper negotiation and dialogue with him. And at the pre-council meeting of about a month ago, City Council, where all of us, or those members of the president's occurrence, that the city could give Mr. Rodriguez sufficient time. In view of the new evidence that came out of the situation that took place, given Mr. Rodriguez's attorney not communicating with the city, I think it would be wise for a person like Mr. Rodriguez that has been years ago to serve the city very well as a commissioner and as a taxpayer, as a contractor of the city. I know that some of your colleagues might be disappointed at bringing this up, but I think it would be wise that we give him a hundred months, or even less than a hundred months, of Mr. Rodriguez. And all this becomes, we have time to review this paper and then see, you know, at the next meeting or the next month, which amount we should actually pick, and it has a valid explanation. And I think we should allow personally Mr. Rodriguez to himself, or the new attorney to communicate. At one time, we had the impression there was also lawsuit against the city, which is none. Am I allowed to let you mind asking the city attorney, Mr. Strata, if we have any lawsuits about Mr. Rodriguez?
No, no lawsuit in my department.
Okay, thank you. So, with all due respect, the councilman made a motion to second and approve. Do you mind if we make a motion to table those two items for the next big council meeting so we give enough time? Mr. Luis Rodriguez, another week until it's not going to be the end of Elizabeth. He's still going to be here if I don't run away out of the country.
Is that a motion?
With all due respect? Well, we're trying to clarify right now because I asked you, move the resolutions, and they will move the second, and so I was getting a clarification with the attorney right now. Move the second. There's a motion on the table. The question is there, is there a second?
There's a second. I'll second it. There's a motion.
Now, motion to table?
The last second.
Okay, Councilwoman Nasa makes a motion to table? Okay. Councilwoman Perkins Dastky?
Second.
You have a vote on the roll call on the motion table?
This is from, you're talking about the vote by the record?
Right. Okay, any other comments?
Can't count it now.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Dastky?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester?
No.
Councilwoman Jackus?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brode?
No.
Councilwoman Keenan?
No.
Councilwoman Stanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gollum?
No.
Councilwoman Nasa?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
No.
I want four hours.
Can I speak now? It's President? Yes, Council. That is not on the table. I also have an attitude to review the documents from us. The concern I have is not so much on dispute of that interest going back to 2006, 2007. The concern I have is that there's been no payments since 2010. And, you know, anybody who is looking for the city to negotiate, I think there should have been some good faith payment towards these 2011, 2012 taxes. That's my concern. And I'm glad that the documents were provided to us so that we can see that that's very clear, that there's been no payments to the city of Elizabeth since July 2010. If anything, I think that, so that's the reason why I think that the resolution should go forward. Any other comments? Mr. President, may I ask you, any other comments? Sure. Council, I'm not 100% sure, Mr. President, to be honest with you, in something that amounts our attorney in search of the future, I'm not sure whether, because there's no discussion on what's on the table. However, after the table being motioned, now we're discussing, I'm not sure whether that's on the table.
It was the table.
It was the table. So, I, this is why I'm, that's why I'm, that's why I'm, that's why I'm. Mr. President, Congressman Moss makes a reference to, now, Mr. Rodriguez's history in what he done for the city. I think most of us, and not all of us, are very much aware of his contributions to the city. But I think that, not only can I say I personally met Mr. Snaggar, and I met the local firm, and it's especially for me, because I really wanted to be 100% fair to Mr. Rodriguez, who in fact has done so much for the city as they did for him. And there's a statutory requirement, we are bound by statute to take action. And it's not something that we can just let go regardless of our personal feelings or emotions. So that is why I was kind of disappointed in the motion to table, and that's why I think the resolution should move forward. Because the way it explains to me, not only the fact that the payments have been made for two years according to Mrs. Snaggar, but also that we are bound by statute to take action. And so, it was my responsibility to ask her to vote this matter out today. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Councilman Gollum was up.
I'll be brief, Mr. President. And I yield for my colleagues, Mr. Council Keenan. I have, I have a statement to say, and Council Brode, and Council Wester, as I did, also as a researcher, and I'm very aware, and matter of fact, I was very proud, and so I think it's one contribution that he has here towards the city. And, you know, this is not an easy decision to make, but like Council Wester said, it's bound by statute. And that's why I think it's also, Council, that would think, that's a guarantee, but and, and I think we tried, as we had any that we possibly could, as you know, Mr. President, to work with Mr. Rodriguez, we gave him every opportunity. But when you look at it, it's important that there's no payment that had been made that Council Brode indicated. And if you check it, you'll find that it's there. No payment had been made. I mean, you know, it could have been made a dollar, and that would have made something in evidence, at least in time, but nothing was made. That's what I would mean. I think that just was something that just, since we found the statute, that we just can't let keep going on and on and on. So that's what I think that we should move with this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Comments?
Councilman Keenan first.
Yes, first of all, I consider Mr. Rodriguez a friend I've known for a very long time and appreciate all of the things that he's done in the fourth city. However, we need to bend over backwards to make sure, out of fairness, that the letter of the spirit of law applies to everyone. And one of the requirements is that we pay our taxes. So this is a situation, this came out while I was sitting council president last year, and for whatever reason, we're counting our debts this year. But we need to be scrupulous that we both follow the letter of the law and also avoid any appearance that we're not obeying the letter of the law. And I think this has come to such an extent that we must, that we must put the problems back on the tax rolls. And I am urging my colleagues to support voting to overturn the problems to the tax rolls. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments?
Councilman Jackus?
Yes, Mr. President. Not too long ago, we passed a program here called Second Chance. And at that, at that meeting, when we passed that Second Chance program, I think there's some people out on our streets right now working and are giving a second chance. Sometimes people need a third or fourth chance in order to get things right. Sometimes people just can't make a payment. Sometimes people just don't have the money to make that payment. Now, I'm not saying that we should upsurge the law because it is a statute, and we had to follow, and that's what I think. But I do believe, and I would firmly believe to say this, I think everyone deserves a second chance, everyone. And everyone in the city council, or on the city council, has voted for people to get second and third chances. Anything, Mr. President?
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Also, Nasa?
Not as much as Mr. Rodriguez's personality. We all know that, besides I went to school, and when I went to school, Mr. Wester, and I went with him, but anyway, just about the same age. The dispute I think Mr. Rodriguez is making is very simple.
It's the one that the money that he allocated toward the taxes. It wasn't used as a formula that, like, either federal government or the agency should be looked into it. That's where Mr. Rodriguez needs to sit down and be able to act. Currently, there's already somebody paying those taxes. Now, somebody's making a revenue, 18%, if he doesn't pay it by certain time, whatever the tax, be myself, I can just stop paying my taxes and my property. And then all of a sudden, five years from now, wake up and say, well, let me pay it just for the sake of it. We don't know what action we want Mr. Rodriguez to do things like this. But the way he explained it, he had an attorney that was assigned to do the work for him, that had turned into the worst, so apparently he got fired. And he saved it for us tonight. Now, again, as Mr. Eddie, Councilman Alaj mentioned, he gives somebody else a third chance. And this is something, you know, we are very close to a fire four votes. So let Mr. Rodriguez, at this point, go to the right direction, whatever he has to do. But personally, you know, I think he should have got this chance. Other week, Elizabeth, I got a drink where we just spent 20, we actually allocated $20 million bonding that in the future somebody's going to pay those taxes. So that's what I have to say. I was going to give him a third chance, even though some of us, we discussed previously, enough is enough, I understand. But majority wins unless somebody would like to reconsider it and have an open heart and some ways that would do the right thing. And then if he does, shame on him, shame on us, if we don't do what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments?
Mr. President, can I say something?
No, you cannot speak, sir, sorry. Any other comments? So all I want to say is that I think it's unfortunate that it has come to this. And I know, you know, several opportunities have been given. There's still another opportunity for this passage, and that is Mr. Rodriguez. If he does, he will be given a window in which to pay what is owed and a manner to rectify. If he takes advantage of that opportunity, you know, it will be rectified, and the properties will not go back out of tax laws. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins, does she? Excuse me, starting to 620 and 600, First Avenue, Fulton, I, everything else. Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Jackes.
No, on 620, 624 First Avenue, no on 600 Fulton Street, I, everything else.
Okay, so that was no on 620, 624, and 600, right.
I think everyone should get a statement.
Councilman Grover.
No. I'm sorry.
Councilman Keen.
Aye.
Councilman Svenning.
No, on 620, First Avenue, 600 Fulton Street, I, everything else.
Councilwoman Perdido. Councilman Mazza.
No, on 620, 624 First Avenue, no on 600 Fulton Street, I, everything else.
President Gonzalez.
Aye, all those who's passed.
Authorize proper city officials to execute all necessary documents for a community housing development organization operating grant in the amount of $20,000 for brand new dating for the period July 1, 2011 to June 30, 2012. Resent the resolution adopted on 25th, 2011, authorizing the execution of a third party agreement which refers to community development or federal agency for the acquisition and rehabilitation of 218 Third Street under the terms of the State Neighborhood Stabilization Program in the amount of $260,000 due to the developer's inability to proceed with said project. Authorize the proper city officials to execute the community development block grant agreement with the YMCA, Eastern Union County, Elizabeth, for funds in the amount of $25,250 to help defray costs associated with the agency's after-school childcare summer dating program for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. Authorize the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the YMCA, Eastern Union County, Elizabeth, to provide emergency shelter funds in the amount of $10,822.06 to help defray operation costs associated with the agency's shelter located at 135 Madison Avenue for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. Authorize the proper city officials to execute an agreement with Rutgers Cooperative Extension for each of West Yale, New Jersey, to provide funds in the amount of $5,447.06 to help defray costs in conjunction with the safety account for Street Elizabeth for the period July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013.
You've heard the reading of the resolutions, what is your question?
The resolution for law.
Move the second, are there any comments? Sign on, roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins, does she? Aye. Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Jackes.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Keen. Councilman Svenning.
Aye.
Councilman Gollman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Authorize the proper city officials to execute an agreement between the city of Elizabeth and the Elizabeth Packers, Inc., Elizabeth, to provide funds in the amount of $7,000 for the period July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013. Authorize the proper city officials to execute all appropriate documents for the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation or Union County Grant Funds in an amount not exceeding $31,800 for the purchase of 200 trees. Authorize the order of contract to suburban consulting engineer, Inc., Mount Harlton, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services for the design and construction administration of the Hallam Playground and Skate Park Facility at a cost not exceeding $90,000. Authorize the order of contract to Johnson Mirror and Thompson, Inc., TransUnion, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services in connection with administration of the South Wall Street Flood Control Study at a cost not exceeding $198,500. Authorize the order of contract to vertical service group, Inc., Cranford, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services in connection with the design and construction administration with a roof replacement at Kingsdown Community Center at a cost not exceeding $22,100.
You've heard the reading of the resolutions, what is your question?
The resolution for law.
Move the second, are there any comments?
Mr. President.
Councilman Jackes.
President, I want to commend the administration, especially the mayor, appropriating CBT money to various organizations here in Elizabeth. However, it is not enough. I've talked about this for many, many years beyond having Republican-controlled Congress, which has cut money back to these programs. And I need to be drawn on this, but I don't speak because I am a part of the PAL football team, Packers, dating back in 1963, '64. And during that time and that experience, there were thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars given to the PAL to keep young men, young people, young boys off the streets and out of trouble. $7,000 just be about enough money paid for football officials to officiate games. Each one of those officials that gets on that field costs $75. Usually, there's three men doing it. And that costs about, I don't know, $240, $250 per game. If these kids are playing five or six games at home, and God knows where they're playing, the last time I saw them, they were at Montana Park near Grand Trophy Field. I don't know. But this is very sad, seeing what has happened to Elizabeth, and how we are through the margin with such important programs. You know, football doesn't build character. It builds mental fortitude. It builds heart, and it builds guts. And prepare young boys to become young men. And for us to sit here and not say anything about $7,000 for football team of kids, which probably is for about 14s, to be split up, is a shame. And no one else says anything about this. Yet we'll spend $31,000 on trees. Not that I don't have anything against trees. I love trees. But I think it's more important that we spend money on kids.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any other comments? Sign on, roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins, does she? Aye. Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Jackes.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Keen.
Aye.
Councilman Svenning.
Aye.
Councilman Gollman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Establishing any empty parking space in front of the premises located at 1019 M Street. Establishing means for the removal of dissoled delivery on property listed on schedule via file in the city clerk's office and the total amount of $10,937.67. Permit Melonel Productions Inc. on behalf of the Elizabeth Land Chamber of Commerce to conduct their 30th annual carnival, Elizabeth, to be held on Labor Day weekend, September 2nd and 3rd, 2012, between the hours of 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Elizabeth Avenue from Newport Road to Fourth Street. Permitting the start of Midtown Elizabeth Special Improvement District to conduct a festival and car show to be held Saturday, August 18, 2012, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with randy on Sunday, August 19, 2012. Pay utility bills for moving over rental licenses.
You've heard the reading of the resolutions, what is your question? Move the resolution for law. Move the second, are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Perkins, does she?
For this sentence, Dr. Bigg, wasn't it supposed to say to weigh their fees? One of all that I told you. In the synopsis, I figured that would be the most important, in addition to giving them the amount of useful aid. Okay, according to the resolution. Okay, the resolution is broken down into five chapters. Okay, the city council must agree to dewaiver of the $750 application fee as requested. City council must agree to waiving the $5,000 security deposit. City council must agree to dewaiver of all fees for vendors as requested. The mayor has agreed closely request the street police, fire, health, and zoning departments conduct their normal review and the application.
Charles.
Okay.
And this is what customary has to be.
No, it's not. This is the first time we've got this.
It's the first time.
Generally, just give this nonsense of the resolution. No.
Done. That was done before. Anything else?
Yes, it was done before. Have a copy of the regulations on that, sure.
For this authorization?
That's the special improvement district of the city council board.
That's what I thought it was done before, had it?
Now, that must stand corrected. Can you do the research or let me know that about that court? Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Sign on, roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins, does she? Aye. Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Jackes.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Keen.
Aye.
Councilman Svenning.
Aye.
Councilman Gollman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
All resolutions passed. We'll now move on to commendations. We have Bethlehem Jude of Christian Church Church, the 30th and 10th anniversary celebration event. Are there any other commendations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Perkins, does she?
One for Carl Luella. Luella, I have a question right here, Matt Curry. He is a global entrepreneur who's going to be speaking before our Elizabeth Words program. I just wanted to commend him for taking the time and making himself available to speak to our union members. I have all my information to the city clerk.
Any other comments?
Councilwoman. Yeah, I would like to have a commendation for Mr. Reverend Genaro, G-E-N-A-R-O, Sesto, S-E-S-T-O, which is the Associated Pastor Seminary Church. Going to be 91 years old and all this person. And I think having to be a priest for 70 or so years. I'll give the information to your aunt, Ms. Roberts. And I'm sure Mr. David will be going to celebrate his birthday at Nigiri, you know. I'm sure the family will love to see the parishioner take a mouthful of my gift.
Are there any other commendations? Memorials. Fortunately, we've had a few losses in the city. Family members here, we have Josephine Joe Gumbel. We have Inspector Aldo Karate, Public Works. And we have William T. Murphy, related to one of our staff at the city clerk's office. Are there any other memorials?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perkins, does she?
For Mr. Joseph Louis Sider Senior, who's a father of our relocation officer, Reverend John Daniel.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Keen. Yes, many of you know Alice Hallsal, who's been a real community activist and leader and guiding light for many, many decades. Regrettably, there's some whose name is William, passed away recently. So our thought process pairs go out to Alice Hallsal this time. Thank you. Councilman Mazza.
Yeah, I did give the information to the city clerk, Josephine Desesary, and Beatrix Capucha, Desesary will be E-E-C-E-S-A-R-D. And Beatrix Capucha, C-A-P-U-C-C-I-A.
Are there any other memorials? Motion to adjourn. So move immediately.